Okay, so we're gonna get started just because it's 6 o'clock on the dot. So, for those of you who, well, for everybody, I guess. I just wanted to remind before we get started that we're gonna open public comment, starting right now. And it'll be open for 30 minutes. And we ask that, unless you're asked by the board, I guess, to present, because you're presenting, that you stick to the three-minute speaking policy. So, if anybody has any questions, let me know. Okay, so, we're gonna call to order at 6:01. And public comment is open. And we're gonna kind of skip around a little bit on our agenda, because we do have some guests, so we would like them to be able to leave when we're done with them, if they want. Or you can stay, it's fine, too. But I wouldn't, I'm just kidding. So, you wanna, should we start with approving minutes, though, first? No, just goes, okay. We're gonna go straight into the update on the crosswalk project. So, Chris and Chris, Chris squared, we're gonna take it away.
So, thanks for having us. It's weird to be on this night. I appreciate it. So, as you know, last year, we were approached by our chief who talked about concerns about the crosswalk being a safety concern, and different ways that we could look at maybe making some modifications and changes to make a change for people that are crossing, but also cars in the morning with the sunlight, so there really is a hazard. And so, we were passed at the end of last year to start looking at options. So, we were fortunate enough to meet with Chris Rice, who's a great engineer with us. But to do that, we had to get, lay out multiple meetings. We met with the DOE to talk about using sightline, other modifications, or things that we're gonna need from the DOE side before we get this project going. We all agreed that using their entrance down past our current entrance would be a better sightline, also be a better place for pedestrians to cross, so it's not down right here next to the fire station. So, we got Chris involved, Chris started working, and we were fortunate enough, and I wanna give a lot of thanks to Martini Northern, who is a Newfields resident, so, construction firm, who actually put together the numbers that you have in your quote today. And oftentimes, there's a price tag with that. They did that as a benefit to Newfields and Newfield Elementary School, so there was no price for them for all these prices together. So, I do wanna make sure I highlight that and say thank you for the work they did, the work, the collaboration in Newfields to work with us. So, you've got some price figures, you know, the one that I'm telling you to work from is the $2.3 million. And again, I know that sounds like a large amount of money. But the reason why, Chris can get into more, as we're looking at doing this, there's a lot of site work that has to be done. And the majority of that is if we have a crosswalk. You can see here, this is all of our pavement that kind of gets into ADA accessibility for people who maybe in wheelchairs have mobility needs getting up to our school. So, Chris had to use his figures, what, 5% is the biggest location?
Without handrails and other things you gotta do for ADA accessibility.
So, doing that required a lot of groundwork to be able to give us both a parking lot with a different type of system. We'd still have bus loops that would be able to come in the current entrance, and it'd only be used by buses, and it would come in that entrance, come around the building, and they'd still drop off in the morning where they do now, so kids would get off on the playground. Parents would come in, in the new entrance, they'd come around, and they'd drop off here, but both would exit out the backside. So, buses would exit out the backside, cars would exit, again, out the backside. In the afternoon, again, we'd have different pickup times like we do now, we'd stack multiple buses, but everyone would be here, we'd dismiss out the front, they'd go, parents could go first or second, however it can want. You have about 95 parking spaces right here. So, we're moving all the parking from behind the building, again, that's a safety concern, with people parking behind our building. And you're having one entrance that people would be coming into, which is our main entrance. Obviously, with the key codes, we'd go in the back entrance for teachers, but we'd have everyone parking one location. So, literally taking all the parking that surrounds the building, moving it to our central parking location, and then having that crosswalk back over here. So, again, removing everything where we know the hazard has been identified next to the fire station. So, Martini Northern put together a quote, gave us different reasons, and again, they were very conservative, because they didn't want to underbid. Whatever they put here, this is just for you for reference of the amount of money. This would have to go out to a formal bidding process, and when you get to a formal bidding process, oftentimes, you see different types of numbers that come in here. Ellen, myself, met with Jenny on Tuesday?
Yesterday.
Thursday, Tuesday, right? So, we did talk, we met out yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday.
And the reason we met yesterday is because Chris, Ellen, myself, and Martini Northern talked, and we talked about, 2.3 is a lot of money. How do we reduce that? And a lot of the money, 1.8, their proposal was about site work, and that's your moving dirt, that's your concrete, that's guardrails. So, we talked about drainage, the big one, right? So, we talked about, could we remove this section, okay, if we had the patterns there? So, Chris and Martini Northern are gonna look at that to be able to see what that drop-in price would be. It would be a reduction, you know, in a range that we can't give to you, but they're gonna work on that, you know, have that conceptually for January, as they start. To turn it over to Chris, he had to talk about anything specific on the plan, or things that you had to think about, and kind of how we got to this process, because I know there's a lot of surveying and a lot of different things.
Sure. Chris squared, can I finish some crap once I, yes? I just wanna confirm, is this the same as up there?
Yeah.
For me, for a reason, I need it vertically, so, it's not going like that. So, this is the same as that?
It is.
And then, the second question, and I, it sounds like you're gonna go into it with the potential, you talked about potentially removing this and trying to understand the cost. I don't know that I fully understand what that is in the currency. I mean, I see what it is, but what would the?
I was gonna say, because Chris, you were saying you were only going in and out that back, so is it even necessary?
Well, and I'm not suggesting it's not, I just wanna know what the proposal is.
Well, the idea at first, the issue that was brought to us was the conflict with the parent drop-off and the bus drop-off at this intersection. So, our first pass was, how do we separate that? So, I think initially, we were thinking, this would be for the parents for their loop, and the buses would come in here like this.
Thank you.
I think the alternate that Chris might be mentioning is if we got rid of this, right, where he would kind of co-mingle it somehow. But the ideal was kind of this setup to try to just keep all the parent drop-off through here, and the buses are totally segregated this way, go out through this entrance, and there. I don't know if that'll change based on price points, and if we, and if we're moving this, then obviously that changes the traffic pattern.
Chris, so when we met, I have some clarification on that, because when we met a couple meetings ago, when we were talking about that, because I said I still was concerned about the swing of that front part anyway, and, yeah, which I know it's fine, but, because we only have two buses, we don't really need all that, that loop just to be for buses. So, after experiencing what they do at CMS, and how they do have it a separate bus loop, but then a separate parent, but they do merge together, I said, well, we could easily do that at Newfields. So, that's where the conversation came of that back part, right? Yeah, right there, where they start to co-mingle, just making sure to have somebody there to make sure that they could co-mingle, fine, and we wouldn't have an issue, because unlike some of the bigger schools, we don't have a million buses, so, we have more cars than buses, so, yeah.
We did take the, try to take the worst-case approach, I mean, there's still some feedback we could get, like I just said, this play to the fire department, for instance. So, what we held in the back here was a 20-foot-wide bus lane, which is typically what the fire department requires for a fire lane. Maybe they would accept a reduced width to 16 feet or something, and then you save four feet of pavement times 500 feet, everything will just start adding up over time. This area in the front has costs with it, because you're building the pavement section. We've also got a section of retaining wall with guardrail and fence along this area because of the slow transition there, so if you get rid of that, and there's a drainage system that's associated with this as well. So, I hate to throw numbers at it, but I would guess here, I mean, it's gonna be a substantial savings if you get rid of that. Again, we kind of drew up and designed and priced the ideal scenario as a starting point. Then the numbers came in, I think, last week, and we were like, wow, you know, everything is, prices are crazy for everything now. But if I had, I mean, if I had to guess, you're probably in the half-a-million-dollar range for that piece maybe being removed, but we're working through those numbers. There are certainly things you can do to, like we talked about, mix it and still make it safe, I think, and use what you currently have. This was just the option that we had initially laid it on. And so, part of what we had done, in order to get an accurate number for you, you can't really bid that off of a concept plan, which is a sketch, right, because you gotta take into account the elevation changes with your age facilities. We did a lighting plan, so you knew how many light poles you need. We did a landscape plan, so you know the cost of the landscaping. So, we tried to include everything that you could possibly need. You could always scale things back, plant less trees. There's some electrical work that needs to be done as part of this concept, because there's some low-level electrical lines here. I did cordial, they would do all that work, and not build a school for that, but they would, there is some work I'm involved with making this work if you go this direction. Really, just either set a new pole and raise those power, those lines are right out here, but if you picture flattening out this grade, those power lines are gonna be about this elevation once you get up there right now, because everything dips down, they're way higher than here, so. And we did do a full drainage analysis at the town, for any other, like we would for any other project. So, we were doing a private development, and we had to go before the state of New Hampshire, or a town, and meet their drainage requirements. The plan we provided and that was priced meets all those requirements. So, we've pre-treated and treated the runoff, and we've reduced the people to flow off-site as well. And we ran some truck movements and bus movements, just to make sure that everything's free-flowing, there aren't conflicts, and that everything works well for what we're trying to accomplish.
And you had to move oil tanks, right?
Yeah, there's an underground propane tank here. This, that might be a savings if we can shrink the aisle wood, because those tanks are right, the existing ones are like right there, so, there's a potential, if we could reduce that, we just didn't have the time to work out all those little bugs. So, again, we took kind of the worst case. I think the numbers will come in lower once you scale a couple things back, make some little tweaks here and there. But that's where we were at. And just to keep in mind, there is a significant elevation change. The elevation change from the entrance of the school down to this point here is about 15 to 16 feet. So, when you're trying to get this parking level up, climb it closer to this for access, people walking, no stairs and such, there's some fill in this area. We tried to take advantage of the underground drainage system to use the underground chambers as part of your fill. So, we did what we could to try to minimize the earthwork cost, but you're still bringing in material and gravel. It is, it is a pretty large area, so, that's essentially where we were at, and how we got to the numbers we were at, so.
The other part of the conversation is how this becomes usable for the community. If anybody's trick-or-treat down town, you can see parking up and out, it's hastic, there are people parked everywhere, celebrations of learning at our school have become, you know, very prominent, and so, 95 spots, you know, 85, sorry, 85 spots will accommodate, you know, that traffic in one area. So, again, that's an added benefit to the community when we have this, knowing the number of events that we do have downtown, and there's cars and people and walking everywhere, that we'd have a more central location. So, that is kind of the site conceptual design. We've got the numbers. The reason I asked you to use the 2.3 quote is because Martini Northern put in their fee. Anybody that would bid this would have a fee for contracting, so the 2.3 gives you a more accurate number. The other number was if they didn't do it, if you look for someone else, but anybody who's gonna do this, do a contract, and then someone else, so there'll be a fee that's in there. So, that's why the 2.3 would be more realistic than our recommendation to go.
And there are, also, just so you're aware, also included the bonding fee, assuming that the project would have to be bonded, and assumed, pay us bacon wages for, essentially, if this project would have to be paid to anybody that's working on the project. So, if that turns out not to be true, those numbers could come down a little bit, but that's what they assume, again, to try to give you the worst-case number.
I think it's exciting, it's scary, right, in many ways, but it's really helpful to have more concrete looks. I keep thinking, that's a couple months ago, where we didn't have this, it was a lot of conceptual thoughts and stuff. The way I am hearing it, it sounds like there's still lots of big question marks in terms of like, like this, we, what I think I understand is sort of the max cost for like this, you know, maximize plan. And so, I would ideally want to know, thank you, is this additional to what?
So, that's the bond schedule, so if you were to bond the cost per year and the tax impact per year, and so there's a five, seven, and 10-year bond. That's why you have three pieces of figures.
Knowing, and we had a little bit of a conversation about this last month, and maybe you can, I guess I just wanna say, knowing that timing of various parts of the funding of some project, whether it's this one, or some scaled back version that has certain guardrails, I'm just curious to know how we're gonna get from here to there, and what our plan is for?
So, I think the, this is just me speaking, the next steps, I think, would be to, I think, taking out that front piece is kind of a no-brainer, based on where we've come as far as, once we figured out how many cars and how many buses could be in both loops at one time, and the, in the merging of the two traffics, I don't think that front area is a necessity. I also personally really like the idea of not having cars in front of the school anymore. I've always felt that that was somewhat of a safety hazard, when you come around that tight front area, it's a little daunting when you come up on a student standing there. So, I think that, I would say, then, I don't wanna scrap the project, I think we should still move forward with looking at other alternatives and, and getting quotes of things that we could pare down, specifically that front portion, which, like you said, there's a lot of drainage there. The biggest thing for me was the fencing in the front, because that's, it's a necessity, and it's really expensive. So, that's kind of where I see us going.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, I think, with Jenny in the spirit of what she's saying, in that I don't know that I could, I don't even know, are we being asked to approve anything right now, or just to sort of acknowledge the receipt of this?
Our task was to give you a project, and as we give it to you, we even thought further, so that's why we'll come back in January. We might not have time to put it as a warrant for 2024.
That's what it sounds like.
It may be a warrant for 2025, but at least now we have figures and that we can build upon that. So, we'll go up a little bit in 2025, but then we also have a process of how do we bond it? What does bonding look like? And then, if you don't do it in 2024, it gives you time to talk more with the community, you know, talk with parents, talk with the community. Why, why is this important, not only because of safety, but the value that it adds to our town for big, large amounts?
100%.
So, that's really where we're here, you know, what you decide is fine, we'll keep working on it, but now we actually have numbers, and we've been talking about it for years without any numbers, right?
Right, yeah.
Now, we know what it will cost, and then we gotta figure out a way, how we're gonna pay for it, that meets the needs for the school and for the town.
And, I mean, just a little history, this came up, I mean, it was, it was brought up over 10 years ago, and I swear, since I've been here at Newfields, it's come up every couple of years. So, now to have, at least have some numbers in a plan, it's, it's a, yeah, instead of just what if, I think it's, it's good.
Jenny, can I ask one more question, then?
Of course, you can ask, you can ask whatever you want. You sit on the board.
No, I know, in terms of the process.
Yeah.
At one point, we were talking about various ways of funding things, including things like grants, and I remember saying, or hearing, that at one point, in order to even consider applying for anything of those, in that caliber, we had to have something like this and numbers. And so, perhaps in January, we have sort of an updated set of numbers, maybe we can start to look into alternate potential funds.
So, even with what we have now, we're in a better place. So, and we already have, do you wanna talk to what we already have applied for?
Yep, so, Rich Kane, our director of safety, did put in $100,000 as a max we could put in for our safety grant. We won't know about that until March. So, we did put it in, we used a ballpark figure early on in the process, because we had it defined, so we did apply for that $100,000. So, we won't hear from that. There's SAU 16 put in for $1 million overall for all of our buildings, because the need is there. So, how they disperse that funds at the state, we won't know until March. Do you also have any related impact fees? We could, again, you know, work with the town on that. And then, I talked with Jenny, you have a safety and security trust fund. As more grants come out from the state, we have not had to use that safety and security trust fund for quite some time. I would make a recommendation that we use the safety and security trust fund as a way to make this, too. So, there is other revenue sources other than just our tax impact that we already have.
Yeah, and if, and if there's any ways to start some things that would ultimately feed into the plan as we eventually want it to be, with some of those dollars, to address some of the primary concerns, like in phases, I think that would be probably.
So, one of my, actually, one of my questions after sitting on this overnight is, I know we sort of talked about it yesterday, if we got rid of the front piece, there was the discussion of like a, the handicap accessible, specifically the ramp, you would, Chris, the other Chris told me that you would have more room to make it more of like an S, so it might save, it could, right?
Yeah, there is a cost associated with, so basically, we have a walkway that comes to a junction point, and if you're able, you walk upstairs, you go up the stairs, and then if you're a wheelchair, crutches, you're taking like a long, a long gated ramp system. But we were kind of limited for space, given this loop area. If this is gone, that gives me some area to kind of lengthen the sidewalk, so the sidewalk could get longer, but it takes up the more expensive component, which is the retaining wall between the ramps and the handrails and all that stuff, so it'll give us some room to make some of those improvements. Another thing we could potentially look at is, if this is definitely not ever gonna happen, do we, do we maybe try to get more betting for the buck with parking and pull this out a little bit, and, you know, swing this aisle more out that way is a possibility? We did also discuss, you know, what happens if we took this out? I mean, there's, take out like this section of the parking.
Is that parking, yeah?
Oh, I see.
It's phased, the phased parking.
And that has savings with it as well, although, if, you know, if you're in this area, the thing we were discussing is, is if you're gonna build this section first, and then you decide to go build that later, it's a lot more expensive, because now you're dealing with trying to merge things in, and things might be functional, operating, and things like that. So, the best bang for the buck is to kind of do this piece as one, you're installing all the drainage at once. You could potentially phase it to get your infrastructure in, and maybe just build this section first and put that one out a couple of years.
So, my, I guess my, because the main concern with this whole project was the crosswalk. So, the reason I asked about the S in that, is that something that could be its own separate project, per se, as if you're looking at this in a phase, would moving the crosswalk to that area, and then building out the sidewalk piece?
So, just doing this?
To get to the, to get to the front there, is that specifically, not for handicap accessible, but also for just the walkers and the bikers and those people, is that even an option?
We talked a little bit about that.
Did you?
And he said, you're still gonna have to do all this site work because of the slope, right? Because if you don't do the site work, it's coming in, it's not so properly, you're gonna, you're gonna ruin the earth.
Okay.
So, if you're gonna do all the site work, I don't know why we would do all the site work and just build a crosswalk and not give us the true, you know, parking lot and the system to keep this park safe, too, because we still have parking all around here, still have this entrance right here, which is still a nightmare, especially in the morning and September and October, with the sun beating down, so.
I thought your question, sorry, was maybe do you just not build any of this, but just do the sidewalk as its own piece up to the door, which you could do?
I mean.
Or maybe just build a loop and the crosswalk and leave that out for later?
Yeah, I'm just looking at it from, like, if, in a perfect world, I would 100% just put this in front of the town and see what they say, but if, if we don't get anywhere with, not necessarily this year, but, you know, put it out in front of the town, see, see if it bites, see what kind of legs we have, but what are some of our other options on a smaller scale? Because, like, when we walked it in the summer, we all agreed that that, this is really the only option for the crosswalk moving, is to move it to that area to be safe. And we saw it on the first day of school, when there was a fire call in the middle dismissal, so.
And maybe there's things you can do, like, I don't know if you want, you could eliminate landscaping, I don't know what the bunch of number in there was for that, but it depends how much you wanna peel off. Another thing, I wouldn't necessarily recommend it, but, you know, we carry concrete curbing around the site, you could go down to Batuvanis curbing, I wouldn't recommend that, only because after a couple of years of plowing, it's gonna look like junky, and they're gonna be replacing it. I just wouldn't, that, that wouldn't be what I would present to you as, I wouldn't recommend it. You could do it, and it'll work at first, but just know that you'll be maintaining it more than some other things. So, we, we tried to do what made the most sense, work with the grades, make everything work, drainage, utility, and operation-wise, for you.
So, because I know it's a safety thing, and so, part of me has a hard time, like, putting it off, right? So, if we're putting it off another year, that's a whole 'nother year of it being an unsafe situation. Like, is there stuff we could be doing now to try to move it forward? You know what I mean? Like, because I just, I'd hate for us to wait a whole 'nother year, because it's a whole 'nother year of it being an unsafe environment.
No, I agree with Jack, that's what I was gonna say, but I also don't know that that has to be, I mean, we could problem-solve it now, but it sounds like if our plan is to look to see what might be feasible to budget for in 2025, maybe we can come up with more direct solutions to address the safety thing, either as part of this, or even things that we can do in the meantime to address the safety concern.
Well, and I think.
It's like we don't wanna ignore it.
No, we definitely don't wanna ignore it.
However, it's been around for, you said it was noted 10 years ago, so it's not like.
Well, that specific issue wasn't, but, yes, this plan, this version of it, yeah. So, I mean, I, I don't think it's a no for this year, I'm not saying that at all, I think we need to relook at numbers in January.
But don't warrant articles have to be done this month?
We have enough time, we do have time, because we can do it by January, right?
I thought it was December.
So, it just has to be ready for the public hearing?
Public hearing.
February.
Which is February.
Okay.
So, in our January, well, our January meeting is the earliest meeting of anybody, so, if we're discussing this in January.
It'd be before the select.
It would be before anything else that we would, we would be able to put it on the ballot.
So, you would have time next month to look at an updated quote, and to have a further conversation about the grand plan, as far as, you know, where, where, how do you all feel about, I think you need to have some other conversation, or my recommendation would be that you have other conversation, additional conversation around, also, what does it mean to put it out to vote? Do you feel that you have done some work around educating the community about the project, and have you done your due diligence with regards to that component of this?
Well, next month, this, January would be the public hearing, February would be the deliberative, March is the vote. So, we wouldn't have to have a final before January, but immediately after the public hearing, we'd have to draft it, to have the posting posted in time for the deliberative.
I guess just added food for thought, I'll just throw it there.
Yeah. No, it's.
It's helpful to have as much information.
If this is an important project for the town, five to 10 years from now, this might be a three- to four-million-dollar project.
Well, we know, because it was a $400,000 project a few years ago.
More difficult, so, that might just be something to consider, you know, the more you do now, the cheaper it is for you in the long run. But our goal right now is to, basically, we're coming back with a new estimate to kind of eliminate this aspect of it, redo the sidewalk. I don't know if we had the discussion, if we were still gonna do the overlay, or maybe we could try to break that out as a separate option.
That would be like visitor parking.
You know, the pavement out there right now, along the front, is in kind of tough shape, and we figured if you're gonna have all this nice new pavement, everything, at least do an overlay on some of the existing, I don't wanna say junky, but the beat-up pavement. Those are things you could always, they don't have to be done right now, but.
What, what kind of timeline are we looking at to get new numbers? I know, that's, I know, I'm like putting pressure on, there's a holiday and all things on, but.
So, the goal was, I will contact Chris and Martini Northern tomorrow and ask them to start working on it immediately, that's kind of how we had left it with our conversation, so we'll get it as soon as they can.
Because if we could, I mean, if we could see stuff before our meeting and chew on it, honestly, then our, the meeting, we would have a little bit more of an idea, I think, where we would wanna go forward.
We can send it to you as soon as they can.
You know what the date is, next week?
It's January 5th.
Yeah.
3rd. It's 9th. January 4th.
Fourth.
January 4th.
Pretty early.
We're the first ones out of the gate always. Beth, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I had it, but.
Go ahead.
I just am not sure, for the walkers, where is that path for walkers? Because I'm just seeing the bus lanes.
It's hard to see on there, it's, yeah.
I can bring it closer to you.
Beth, no, sorry.
So, is this dotted pattern?
Yeah, I couldn't see it the first, you know.
Yeah, I just probably make it for you, but is this dotted pattern, is all new sidewalk?[1718.32]
So it would go right out, they would be able to go all the way right out back on a sidewalk.
And then read out kind of the entrance.
Yeah, the new entrance way, which would be really kind of nice because then they're not walking along cars.
I can make that more clear on the next color plan, sorry.
Yeah, that would be awesome actually, if you could, because that was hard for me to see as well.
I do have one question.
Yep.
Again, I know time wise, but I love having the numbers to look at, but I also understood that it was imperfect, right? There was that blunt, one line, earthwork. But I also recognize, you know, that it sounds like you all are doing this without, without a cost. So thank you for doing that. I don't know how much it would cost to do something a bit more detailed. And so I'm wondering, is there any value in actually? Because if we come back in January or whenever and it's a lower number, it sounds like it will be a lower number. Will that be enough for us to make a decision? Or is it going to be helpful for us to see how much components, you know, break down? Because you're able to provide some now.
Yeah, and I think honestly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong or you want to jump in, but really it came down to the people doing pro bono essentially and the time.
I totally get it, yeah.
We had a limited time. We had to get our, our plans done, designed to a point where it was priceable, if you will, and not just throwing darts at the dartboard. So the number you have is a real number and they did go to their, they didn't just pull numbers out of hat. They went to some, got actual numbers, but they, they kind of did those as favors to Martini. So I think that's why you didn't get the full breakdown of each individual component. They just said, this is your number for everything that's shown on these plans. So you're looking at one sheet here, but we had a full plan set that had an existing conditions plan, a grading and drainage plan that showed all the drainage. I can show that to you.
I know, we, we have it.
Yeah, so it, it details, you know.
I mean, I can't read it, but I have it.
If you want to falsely, fully, I just started reading.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, you know, the phased philosophy and the understanding of how much things order costs.
Well.
And if we, is it valuable to have that information January or no? Is January going to be yes or no?
Almost sounds like phasing would be a bad idea.
So the biggest, the biggest, that earthwork, that's the biggest component and you're going to have to do that no matter what you do.
Phasing, I guess is the right word. Component costs, like for example, you had said this first, this front part was, I know you've all parked 500,000, but that's a helpful thing. I wouldn't have known that. And that wasn't really in here. And so for example, if there's like, if there are parts of this new revised portion that are technically optional, it would be nice to know what things would be.
I think specifically kind of some of the pretty.
Yeah, I can, I can ask if they can break out, you know, landscaping 50 grand.
Yeah.
And.
First, right, that kind of stuff.
Because that would happen later.
Earthwork's kind of all encompassing that includes all your dirt, all your gravels, the light holes.
Cutting the trees.
Like the required stuff.
Signage, you're going to have to have ADA signs, you're going to have stop signs, all the striping that you see. So that, that number is kind of all included, all inclusive. But to answer your earlier question too, if you're going to ask them, if you were going to pay them to do this.
Yeah, just fall by.
It's between five and 10 grand.
So it is a significant amount, okay.
So welcome to do that, but they were taking the approach.
Yeah, go ahead.
They would take the approach, hey, we're a resident town, we want to help out the school and we'll do what we can, knowing that they might not get chosen for the work. They just want to have a photo shot.
That was really awesome.
That's all.
If you were going to say it was $750, I'd say we can.
There's a lot of effort that goes into it, believe it or not. You've got to quantify everything and follow up with cubic yardage and material for everything and then all the excavation, transport costs. I mean, they, there is a lot that goes in that number. It's not just, oh, we'll say it's too big. It's a refined number. And again, I expect it to come down because we did instruct them, you know, be conservative. Don't feel low because we didn't want it. Want to tell you it was 2 million and that comes in at 2.4. Remember that 2 million, you get voted for two and it comes in at 1.8 and everybody's ecstatic. And you can spend 200 grand fixing something else.
Also, this is a big project, I want to point out, right? That, and it is a, it is a big decision to take into consideration. I think that one option certainly could be if you decide in January, even based on the new number, that you want to slow it down a bit. I certainly think one idea is that we could bring Chief Young back in and he could talk about potential ideas for how to increase the safety aspect of the current crosswalk. Like I'm throwing this out there as a potential idea. I don't know if this is really a thing, but I know sometimes during construction projects, there are, you know, temporary additional lighting that is added to, you know, to a street or like a temporary stoplight. Like is there something such as temporary beacon lights? Like they have a Phillips Exeter Academy that could potentially be added temporarily, again, to enhance the safety while you're waiting for this project to start. So that, my point being that it doesn't have to be all or nothing necessarily.
Well, I believe they did assume that this work was going to be done summertime, schools closed. It's a different animal, a little bit of schools in session because of the things you've got, you know, construction fencing, C A D, those type items keeping the kids out of the work zone. And that becomes less, less of a concern. You don't have to do as much if school's not in session and the property's not being used.
I think it could feasibly be completed in summertime.
Yes.
And then just one other thing on that quote, that's initial quote, that's pretty typical what you get to be able to start the process and give you a ballpark figure. When you get actual requests that come in, they will be super detailed.
They do itemize it, yeah.
The last penny, you'll be able to be like, wow, they're only, they're spending 180,000 on, on landscaping and the other companies doing 50,000. So you'll get to see that. And that's when you get the decision.
So Molly, can you speak a little bit to the bond process? And like to that point, what Chris was just saying, if, you know, we get over, we go to the town, we say we want whatever, you put a number out there, but then if we pare it down, like how, how does that whole process work?
So, so for this, this, she put on an estimated bond sale of July. They only do bond sales twice a year to begin with. And so what would happen is you would need to put it on a warrant article. And then that gives you that, I mean, I guess that's a good question if it comes in less because you would have the approval for that.
Because do we, do you, it's up to, right? So.
Well, it's, I don't think it's usually an up to, but, but either, so either way though, what would come in for the tax rate purposes would be you get the money upfront and you pay it back. So what they did is if you look in the car column, it shows the tax rate impact per year.
Right.
So because this is a July sale, payments and sales only happen twice a year. For your first year, you only have an interest payment. That's why it's only, if you're looking at the five year schedule, 13 cents a thousand. But then the second year goes to $1.23 because you're paying principal and interest. So you pay it twice a year, but only one of the two payments has principal, both have interest.
Okay.
So warrant article wording, I would have to look into on that. I, the CMS project was already done when I got here, so it would be.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, that's what I was thinking of.
Well, I wasn't done. We did the bonding process when I got here. But the bond was for the amount that was put on the warrant article. Whereas you're saying we would need less than what was put on the warrant.
Well, I guess because we don't know until we like kind of get into it as far as, I mean, we would, we would know quoting, but we're not going to, because we have to put out to bid. But the timing of, if we did say in January that we want to go out to put it on, we wouldn't have, we would have like a rougher number like this one instead of the more detailed number where we may take some things out.
So I probably have to get back to you on that part.
Okay.
Because like when we did the CMS one, the amount that was in the warrant article was the amount that was.
Okay.
Is it possible that, say it's that amount on the bond and then if we didn't wind up having to spend it all, could that be money that went back to the taxpayers ultimately?
So it does go back to the taxpayers at the end.
Okay.
At the end of each year?
It's, no, no.
At the end of the whole.
At the end of the project, when you close out the project.
Okay.
It does get returned.
Okay, so I guess that's, that was my question because if, the other thing we don't know is if we get, if we got one of the grants that would lower it, if we had, you know what I mean? There's certain things we could.
You can't, yeah, and you cannot prepay a bond.
Right.
So you would be paying it back, but when the project's done, 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 whatever money is left over, because essentially what happens is the bond bank gives you the 2.3 million dollars upfront. You can use that for your project and then you have to put that in your budget every year for the bond schedule. And then at the end, the money that you have in your bank account, when they front loaded you up 2.3, you can either use to pay off the remaining bond payments or you could give it back in the tax rate that year.
And when you said that the completion of the project, is that the building or is that the project including the payment back of the bond?
The, no, so when the project's done, like when they're done, all the work.
Building, yeah, that's the end of it.
Yeah, that's the end of the project and then you know you're not going to spend any more.
Correct.
You still have to pay your bond back, but that money that's sitting in the bank account that you never used and the deposit of the 2.3 million dollars, you can use that towards your bond payments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so are you guys comfortable with coming back in January with the new numbers and everything?
Yeah, I would say no doubt about that. Thank you for, and thank everybody for doing that work.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you. I know it's a lot.
Does there are any questions or questions you have my info? Just to go over what we have to know.
Oh yeah, just stop Chris every day. It's fine. So could y'all change your names though? Because two Chrises, I'm like, which Chris are we talking about?
What was your last name?
Russ.
Russ.
Do we want to skip to the collective bargaining to get the teachers out of here?
No. Yes, we can do that. Yes.
Do we need this? Do we need a projector?
Thank you someone.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
James, can you say we're formally, we are going to ask Chief to come next month? For the following month?
Do, yeah, I'm happy to do that. Sorry. Hi.
Hi.
You want to speak? You can, yes. Sorry. I wasn't sure who you were with, so I didn't say anything.
Yeah, no, no worries. Is now the right time?
Yes, absolutely. I know, is your name Chris too?
My dad's Chris.
Oh, it's going to be very confusing around here.
Yeah, yeah.
He's a parent.
Oh yeah, that's okay. But then yes, then teachers and then, I did too. That's why, sorry, sorry, Suzie. I didn't. Thank you guys so much. I have one, yeah. Okay, sorry. Go for it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here. I appreciate it. My, my name's Tony Tenhagen. I work in New Fields. I have two kids who go to New Fields Elementary, Sloan and Kingsley. They're in second grade and first grade and pretty soon we'll have a third kid coming in.
God bless you.
Same time. It's very cool. And thank you for the community that you built. I'm grateful for it. I just wanted to take, and conveniently the time limit is three minutes because I only wanted to take three minutes of your time. We, our family for, you know, uses the trail system on the Ruck property on essentially a daily basis, whether it's for exercise, clearing up brading. Our kids play out there every day after school. It's, it's a part of the fabric of our lives. I wanted to ask, is the school board up to speed and familiar with all aspects of the?
Well, I am. I don't, yes.
And was anybody at the community finding event last night at the Ward Barn?
Couldn't make it.
I wasn't at last night's, but I was at the previous two.
Okay, great. So I don't want to repeat all the information. There was, there was, in my estimation, over 100 people at the Ward Barn last night.
Easily.
And a lot of passionate support beyond just me. I don't want to be an N of one. I would suggest that during the public discussion portion at the Ward Barn, the balance of the questions were about, obviously in support of preserving and conserving the land. But the counterpoint to that is this isn't a proposal just to conserve the land or maintain the status quo, right? Like the proposal we just walked through right now, the town will decide, do we make these improvements or do we leave things the way that they are? This is a unique situation where if the town doesn't choose to conserve the land, then it will be developed. And the proposal is for 67 homes going into New Fields, essentially all at once, essentially in 2025 and 2026. That's my understanding of it. And that's a significant number of additional students for our school and our community. And so the balance of the questions at the Ward Barn last night were directed at what is the impact to New Fields Elementary School specifically? And, and no one had any answers. And so my ask, and I want to be really cognizant of the time that I have, is if the board would consider giving thought to what is the cost for a student to attend New Fields Elementary School for a year plus the average cost? How many more students could the school accommodate? If the school were to maximize the number of students, what would it mean for the STEM room or for the music room? Could Mr. K do the work he does if he had to travel amongst different rooms? Could the school even fit upwards of 100 more students? There would be more building space even with more teachers being needed. I fully expect at the budget hearing on January 9th, the bond hearing on January 16th and the deliberative session on February 6th, the room will be packed and there will be a lot of questions about what this means to the school because people are afraid. And that's the vibe that I got at the Ward Barn last night. And I just, I felt responsible to share that feedback with the school board since I wasn't sure if anybody was in attendance. That's really all I wanted to share and just ask if the board would consider giving some thought to that and being prepared to speak to it on behalf of the community. Not in favor of the sale or not, but simply so the community has the information it needs to make a decision on March 12th on voting there. Does that make sense? Does that, does that fair ask?
If I may, I think it's fair to ask. I would say, I don't know that I've been asked that before today and I'm happy to have us as a board just consider that and discuss it. But I do think it would have, I don't know that it was ever in my thought to. I didn't have all the details of like, for example, how many homes are being proposed and/or if that was even, it's been such a a lingering conversation with questions that have been moved along from month to month, to the point where I wasn't, even though I think, I don't want to speak to the board, but those are the questions I've been wondering about all along, just curiosity. But the answers to those questions are probably going to take some time to end, end effort. And so to, that is probably why I haven't prepared any answers, not knowing the numbers ahead of time. But I think it's appropriate. Thank you for being the first person to formal.
I already asked the question.
Absolutely.
I asked the question. It costs money to do that.
There's been an acceleration.
Yeah.
Do we know that number?
The Ruck family has made clear that they're not willing to.
No, 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 like what the cost to do that analysis is.
So signs have gone up on the entire trail network indicating that if the town does not vote to approve moving forward on March 12th, then they will shut the trails down on March 13th and begin the process of moving towards a sale. So I think the Ruck family's patience is waning, at least as has been conveyed to me. I would never speak on behalf of our family. I don't know the Ruck family. This is just what has been shared at these public meetings.
So I asked the question early on about, about everything you just asked. What I would recommend, and tell me if I'm speaking out of term, but is to ask in an email to Suzie, the board and Alan, exactly what you're looking for for numbers.
Sure.
Because there is some cost on our side sometimes to putting those types of numbers together and proposals. If there's rough numbers, it's probably something we could help you with, but.
I think there's an economic piece that's important.
Oh, I agree with you 100%.
I also think that there's, there's an emotional, maybe emotional is the wrong word, but securely an academic. People in this room know more about academics than I'll ever approach in my life, right? So like there may not, it may not be possible to have hard concrete numbers on January 9th or 16th, in part because there isn't a hard definitive number of houses that we know are moving in or how many kids will be in those houses. Like these are things we don't know. But I think that the community might like to hear from the most knowledgeable people in terms of education in our community, like what, what it would mean to the, to the children if class sizes went from an average of 13 to 25 or if there was no longer a dedicated music room or questions of that sort. And those I think are softer pieces, but which could more easily be spoken to.
I think we could certainly speak to the impact and some of, I think there's a lot of answers we can come up with without having to spend additional money.
Yeah.
Is what I'm hearing from students.
That's why.
Do you want to add to that?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we know that 1.1 children is what the estimate would be for each household.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
You are correct that your, the assumption that spaces would become classrooms is absolutely correct. I can put all this in writing and I can do whatever the board asks me to do.
I like the idea of, yeah, of you putting your specific questions in writing.
Yeah, I, I think if you guys put some specific questions in writing, because I, I know I've been approached by some people in town asking those specific questions and I mean, I can ballpark some things in my head just as a parent, of course. But those, those are a couple of the things that I said right off the bat was, we'd probably lose the music room and the steam room and the art room and the, you know, because we need to use those as classrooms. So, um.
The experience.
It's okay.
I think the, the heart of the question that I'm hearing from you gentlemen is that the experience would be different.
Right.
So, but I'm more than happy to do whatever analysis that y'all need me to do.
Yeah, so I think as long as, as long as everybody knows that it's not going to be, uh, it's very much a ballpark, um, this is. And also, do we have numbers of like, how, how, what is our max capacity of the school? I know you have this. Where has it been in the past? One of the things, somebody asked me is, what was the most we ever had? And I was like, well, when I was, when I started here was this. Um, so I think if you, yeah, if you could outline exactly what you're looking for, I think I, I would be okay with that, if you guys are okay with that. I don't know. I don't want to give you more work, but. Sorry, Suzy.
It's not hard. It's not a hard ask.
Yeah, I, I've, I've taken up enough of your time. I'm, I'm just.
No, I appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah, it's nice meeting you.
Maybe there's a flip side too. If it's a town forest, um, maybe there's some really cool things the school could take advantage of, um, from a, from an educational perspective. It's largely helpful right now.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll, I'll work my way out of here. I actually hurt my foot on those trails.
I was, I was just going to ask you. It's okay.
Drop of the wire.
Yeah, don't trip in here.
Yeah, I have to go. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to totally skip around on our agenda. We're going to go to, um, the collective bargaining agreement so that our lovely teachers can head home if they'd like. Do I need to do a motion?
Do we need projector on? Do we need it on? I thought it was for the other person.
No, I thought we needed it. No, turn it off.
Turn it off? Okay.
Yeah, I think you need to make a motion to approve the collective bargaining or approve the teacher contract rate this presentation.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the collective bargain, is that the right wording? The collective bargaining agreement? Is that all I have to say? Oh my God, that's it. I'm going to make a motion.
Is that sufficient wording?
Is that sufficient wording?
Thank you.
I, I was like, I don't know. I was like, I thought we already did this.
We want to make sure we get it absolutely right.
Yes, okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Done. Yay. Look at that. Easy peasy.
Anti-climatic.
Anti-climatic. Sorry, I probably should have had you guys go first. Sorry.
No worries. This was all.
No, actually, this is really good for you guys to hear, so, um, um, okay, so.
Yeah.
Be fresh for the kids.
Oh, yeah. There will, there will be. You guys are good. Thank you. Um, okay, so we're going to go back up. Can we just approve our minutes and then we'll go to the businessman? Okay.
I have some minutes.
I think that they're probably encompassed in yours.
All right.
Thank you guys.
Bye, guys.
All right. Under six point two, it says, Ms. Bishop, uh, the board will let Ms. Bishop know their feedback. It's actually me. I'm the one that everybody was letting know.
Oh, yeah, we were. Yep, it is you, not me.
Um, Hoby's name is spelled wrong throughout the entire document. It's H O B Y Harman, H A R M A N.
Okay.
Um, and then, under nine point one, at the very end of, in the bold, it says, Ms. Bishop made a motion to approve. That, that was me.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
The only other thought I had was, do we want, I agree with Hoby, although I spelled, my correction was wrong too, so thank you. Did we want to just note who he, who he is, like why he spoke, or is that intentional?
He wasn't speaking as a person, not as a select board.
Fair enough.
He was?
I didn't think he was here as a select board.
I thought he was here as a select board. Okay.
I think, it's fine. We don't need to, I think it's appropriate to leave it as it is.
I don't recall whether he stayed, whether he stated his position or not.
I don't think he did.
We could just leave it.
I don't recall.
As is. Um, on, speaking of names, on the last page at the top, Rug, I think is two Gs, right? Are you?
Yeah.
It is, yes. Rug, it's two Gs.
And then the only other piece was?
Oh, it's actually, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
They also have, it's not the rug house, it's the, it's the rug property. Um, the house we were talking about is the, the Hilton property.
Oh, that's right.
There's, it's very confusing right now.
That's right.
So there should be Hilton House and Rug Property.
Okay.
Um, and then just the placement of the chief young noted after we voted, um, in nine point one, that last non-bolded part just seemed like an odd place to put that. Can we just throw that up before our vote? Do you know what I mean? Like, uh?
That makes sense.
Because I, that was, I think that was all part of that whole discussion.
Yeah, it was.
It just seems a little out of place.
Yeah.
And then finally, um, what is DFF? It was under eleven other. I have a question. It's the title of.
Oh, it wasn't the policy DFF?
Yes.
DFF?
Oh, it's the boss.
Yeah, it was a policy because there's a policy about selling certain things and.
That's right.
Doesn't make sense the word.
Thank you.
Add the word policy so if anyone reads it.
There you go.
All right, so I am going to, motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Chair Bishop, may I just speak?
You may.
Jim Wainville, I'm just wondering if there's a way for the public to have access to the information that you're discussing at, at, at the meetings? Even here, when you're passing out handouts, it seems to me we don't have to see.
So there, they will be attached to the, the minutes and that's usually within a day or so from this meeting. Uh, I made sure last time that they, because I got your message, I made sure that it got amended and put into the board pack, the packet.
But like even, even, um, when you passed out the handout about the bond information, it'd be nice to be able to display it so that those of us are, you know, it's not like watching a play. You know, it'd be helpful to, where, where we talk about statistics that you're presenting, you know, from the school. Available to all members and, or all the public who are attending the meeting as well.
I'll be honest, no one attended last time. Usually we don't have anybody, but sorry, yes, we will.
You should have the ability to, to, to display it.
Yeah.
Do we have a doc camera in, in the school?
We can make it. If that's what you like.
Or however you wish to have it.
Yeah, we actually, that's why we had it set up. We thought it was going to be displayed and, but he brought the.
You know, like, that was a little difficult to see.
You could switch to the document camera feed to, to show.
We do have one, right? Uh, don't, don't buy one.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, absolutely. I, I have no problem. I've tried to be as transparent as absolutely possible, so I'm, I'm okay with that if.
Sure.
If that's one more thing to set up, I can.
I think it's, I think it's.
I think it's fine. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and I.
The others out there.
And usually we have, and usually we are videoed. Last time, somebody was sick, so we didn't have video, unfortunately, but, um.
Well, sometimes they have the video of you, but they, you know, I don't see what you're discussing.
Yeah.
Which makes it very hard to follow if you're not, if you're not present, but if you're not present, you're not going to have it being displayed. And also to, to follow. And I think if you have more extensive discussions, if you have more people coming in, in the future, if you discuss these plans and all, there's more public awareness, um, more people are motivated to, to see what you're discussing, it'd be very helpful to have the public in large and cover the meeting, attending, be informed in that way.
Sorry, I'm making a note so I don't forget.
Especially since it's such a, if you, if you put it in terms of the asset that that new parking would be to the town itself, that might be more.
Yeah. Well, one of the reasons in last, last meeting, it was discussed, one of the reasons we haven't gone out, is we, this is the first time we're seeing this. I mean, I saw it for the first time yesterday with numbers and everything, so it, it's not, it's just more of a, we haven't, we haven't had anything. We don't want to like send it out there and then have all this, because there has already been scuttled back about it that is false. So I want the actual numbers and the actual plans out there. At least that's my personal opinion.
It's going to be different next month.
And it's going to be different, yes. So, um, yeah, because we had no idea. We had no idea how much we were talking about or at all, like what the work would entail or anything. So it was very much like, I don't want to bring it to the public until I know more, more strategic of what it actually is. And this is much, I feel much better about this, so that was our logic behind that.
Good. Sure, but again, like in the next month, we're going to have the, the A, B, and C with this option, that option, the next option. You're, you're, you're looking at them. It'd be nice for those attendants to do this.
We will have them displayed next time, for sure. Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Of course, no problem. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You do have a fan that has to wait.
No, I appreciate the feedback. I, I appreciate when people come. Trust me. Sometimes we're like, hi.
Good night. Thank you.
Okay, so public input. So I'm going to close public input. I got it.
Seven on the box.
I replied. Are we talking about the same thing? No, okay. Um, minutes, we're all set. Manifest and financials. Sorry.
If you pretend to manifest, no, no big deal.
Well, we needed you here for that, so we figured.
It's fine. It's totally fine. Um, so before I dive into the financials, I did get the invoice, so I can now ask for the impact fees. Um, the invoice, just so you know, is twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-four, but I'm going to request the amount that you approved in the last school board meeting, because I need to attach the meeting minutes and this to send to, um, I can't remember the lady I asked for.
Sue, Sue McKinnon.
Yes, her. And, um, because I'm going to be asking for less than twenty thousand, we don't have to have the public hearing.
Yeah, because we, so I just was looking in our notes. We, we had voted the last time in, for the additional eight thousand. The prior meeting, we voted for, no, this is the additional eight. The one prior to that is where we had voted to go up to nineteen.
Yeah.
Because the original quote for this work was less, and then at the last meeting, it was more in this ballpark.
I looked at the minutes and sent Molly the exact numbers that the board voted on.
Yeah.
So the, but the meeting before you voted the nineteen.
Yes.
So I'm going to use the nineteen because you can't breach the twenty mark without having a public hearing. Unless you want to have a public hearing before the new year.
No, so.
Because they expire December thirty-first.
Right, so we had already approved the nineteen two meetings ago.
Yep, so I'm going to use those meeting minutes and this invoice to ask for the nineteen.
Okay.
And so the delta between the nineteen and the twenty-two.
Is like three.
I think three thousand dollars.
So what I was saying is when you go to do the three thousand, these notes just got approved and it shows the eight thousand.
But what she's saying is because the total cost there is more than twenty thousand, we have to have a public meeting, even though we voted twice.
Could we do that in January?
Well, yeah, so, so, so the, this problem is, is the impact fees that are expiring.
Right, we have to use them. They're nineteen thousand.
So I want to use the ones that are expiring.
Yes, we need to use those.
So that's why I'm going to ask for the amount that, the nineteen thousand that's expiring. And then any work done more, we could have another public hearing down the line if we need to.
Yeah.
But I, I believe it was just the nineteen expiring. I can.
It is, yeah.
But I was.
That sounds accurate.
That does sound accurate.
So I'm going to use the meeting minutes from two meetings ago, this invoice, and then, so next financial, you will see this as an expense, but you're going to see in my little green box, the offsetting revenue. So it does have to show as an expense throughout the year, so at the end of the year, you might show your over-spending your budget.
But we're not.
You're not because you have that as unanticipated revenue.
I get it. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
That's what I'm going to do today.
Okay.
Also in your board pack is the current year financial. So looking from the November financial till now, we had quite a bit of expense added specifically surrounding special ed transportation. And then we had a little bit of, well, a good chunk of operations in plant for general supplies. We took a real good look at the utility encumbrance and had some repair needs.
Did we not budget properly for the special ed or is that just the way it's hitting?
No, this is just the increase from the prior month.
Oh, okay. I'm like, what?
So we don't, so we don't have to look at every single line item every month. I just list the changes from the prior month.
The changes, okay.
If you want to see how you're doing versus the actual budget, if the, uh, transportation's in function twenty-seven hundred, which is on page six. So, um, you are over budget, but, um, student needs change.
Yeah. Well, I, okay, the, the reason I was asking is because we do have that special ed fund, so do we need to be, do we prepared for that, to pull money from that?
So I, I would wait.
Yep.
Because you would only want it, because once you pull money, you can't put it back.
Right.
So only if you really start to track to overspending the total budget.
Okay.
Then you would want to take qualifying expenses, which you can see here, it is overspent on that line. And a lot of it's encumbered, so it, student needs could change throughout the year. So you can see for special ed transportation, you've actually only spent seven thousand and nine dollars, but twenty-two thousand is encumbered.
Okay.
So meaning student needs could still change throughout the year. We just encumber what we know today.
Yeah, I think that that's just, I would just say, let's keep an eye on that and if you feel like we maybe are burning hot on anything and we need to use that. We just want it on people's radar.
And I wanted to speak briefly, um, just to let the board know, I've already had this conversation with Jenny, but just to put it out there as well and for an additional time, that we have had to spend some unanticipated money with regards to the odor in one of the classrooms here to assess the situation and figure out where the odor was coming from and what to do about it. So we're still in the process of that.
It was not a classroom that is used, it is a second, it's considered a secondary space, so it did not impact any of our classroom learning spaces. It's an area that people come and go and we just relocated those small groups.
Thank you for that. Verification.
Yeah, no, that was good. I was going to force that clarification, even though I already knew the answer. Thank you.
So did anyone else have any questions in the current year financial?
No.
Okay, great. So Ellen, if you want to pass those down to us.
I love your charts.
So, um.
Such a dark.
Hi, Charles.
In your board pack, there was two versions of the budget. One was the reading at one point oh, and the other was the reading at eight steps.
Yes.
Um, so I had to choose one, um, so I chose the one point oh, just for comparison purposes. Plus, the, um, one point oh is not going to affect the default because any new position, which this would be a new position, whether it's at the point six or the one point oh, cannot be included in your default unless it's related to special education. Um, so.
But isn't this required?
I was going to say, and isn't a reading specialist part of special?
Well, I mean.
Did you say special ed unless it's special education?
So, but a reading specialist isn't considered special.
No, but isn't it required, a required position now?
I'm asking for clarification as to the word that Molly chose.
Well, so.
What was the wording that you said?
Well, so.
Because I, my hearing is bad, so I'm genuinely asking.
So for the default budget, so let me rephrase it. So the basis of your default budget is the current year budget, so the fiscal year twenty-four budget, the year that we're in right now. And then you can add mandatory expenses required by law or mandatory expenses, um, required by special education or if there's an active collective bargaining agreement. So for example, your pairs did not negotiate this year. They have an active collective bargaining agreement that was approved by the voters on a warrant or on the ballot. So that is required. So all the pairs increases are in the default. Suzy is not in a union, so any proposed increase for Suzy is not in the default.
Okay.
Sorry to say.
Thank you.
But so then, then still going with, what Jenny was saying, if the reading specialist position is a required position by law, wouldn't that have to be in the default budget?
So I can go back and look at that.
That's an interesting question.
I think that I would have to ask our attorney that, um, because the guidance is always, and I guess, I'll have to ask your attorney that because that's a great question.
Definitely, because I think that that is going to be a, a question at the deliberative session and I want us to be able to be very clear on why we're proposing the way we are and, um, what, what we are held to by law and versus nice to have.
We can get the answer to that.
Right?
Yes, I think we'll have to do a little, I can do a little bit more.
We all agree about.
So right now, the proposed default assumes that you cannot put it in the default, um, but that, we can, I'll look into that. I'll see that action.
Okay, awesome.
So going back to the first page, with, on the first page with the handy DAB chart, you, I grouped it by category. So you have the current year budget and the proposed budget, then you have the dollar value of those change and the percentage of the change. So if you look, your total budget change is a six point three-five percent. This groups it into these categories. Okay, and it shows you a visual breakdown of where all the expense is. On the second page is what I had as the default, um, to the proposed. And so the default, the basis is the current year, and then you add the mandatory contractual obligations. However, what people see on the ballot is actually the proposed versus the default. They don't see the current year, so that's why I've outlined it here for you. So what the people are going to see on the ballot, pending investigation on the reading specialist, would be the three point one oh seven is the default.
I see.
And the three point two five two is the proposed. And so if people want to understand what's the difference between the two numbers I'm choosing for, that's the middle.
Because that would be a very big difference if, if we were allowed to put that in the default.
Yes.
That's why, okay.
Molly, is there any role?
Sorry, I cut you off.
Sometimes people really react a certain way to a percentage. Is there a way to attach a percentage to this or do now, like we did with the six point eight five? I mean, I can calculate the percentage, but like. I mean, I can calculate the percentage, but like, is that, you're saying these two numbers are what's on the?
I actually, in the past, having just the numbers has been, I've seen be more beneficial than a six percent rate, a six percent increase.
We should, I just wanted to know. I remember at one point, learning that the language of the warrant articles is restricted to be very specific. And so if we're saying it's not even allowed, that's.
So you will not see any percentages on warrant articles? So the only thing the warrant article is going to say is, shall the Newfield School District raise an appropriate three million two hundred and fifty-two thousand and thirty dollars?
Otherwise, the default will be X.
Well, then it says, then the second sentence says, the default is this. The school board recommends the three million two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And you guys have in a budget committee?
They're not here, apparently.
So, then it.
It's Rachel.
Jane.
And Jane.
And Bobby, but Bobby's on the board now.
And if they approve, and then if they want, if the budget committee wants your protocol, it's also recommended by the budget committee. But there is no percentages on the budget, anything like that.
This is the first year nobody has come to this meeting for budget.
Well, isn't it usually you?
It was me, yes.
Yeah, Jenny and I were there last year, right?
Well, no, I was on the board last year.
So I was.
You were there, no, you were there.
So, and I, I'm happy to format any way you want. But the difference, so pending the investigation on the reading specialist, the delta is one forty-four between the two numbers that people will see on the ballot. So the first item is related to salary. So if you're adding a position, you can't include it in the default. But if you're eliminating a position, it has to be removed from both.
Okay.
Okay, so, and also if you're adding time to someone, it can't be included in the default. So the reading specialist and the increase in media from point four to point five was not included in the default.
Got it.
And any non-union salaries, okay? Benefits, so we have a nine point nine percent G M R for health, four point seven for dental. I can only include that for union employees. So this twenty-five thousand nine forty-one is for the new reading specialist, as well as all the, the delta for all non-union employees.
Okay.
Okay? Food service, operational expense, supplies, equipment, those are all going to relate to the rising cost of items, inflation. And any additional supplies that Suzie has asked for in the budget. The only time you can put things in here is if it's been on the ballot. So even though we have a first student contract, it's, and it's a multi-year contract, so we're locked in. The first student contract was not a standalone contract on the ballot.
Okay.
Okay? And then I skipped over site contracted service. So site contracted service, last, the current year, meaning last year, the current year's rate is higher than the proposed. And so since it doesn't fall in a special education, I went with the current year. And that's actually beneficial to us. And then everything else relates to about eighteen hundred dollars. But again, the rule of thumb is you have to take the current year, the basis is the current year budget. And then you have to add any mandatory contractual obligations. But to be mandatory contractual obligations, it has to either be mandated by law. It has to be in a C B A that has appeared on the ballot for the voters to vote on. It can't be like an elect, a multi-year electric contract that we have. Even though you're in that contract, that specific contract wasn't presented to the voters to vote on.
Got it, okay.
Thank you, that was the first time I heard it explained that completely, so I appreciate it.
And, but I chose to do the default versus the proposed, because that's what people are going to see.
Awesome.
Okay, and then I put the line-by-line budget in here.
Thank you for that, yeah.
And again, this is the line-by-line for the one point oh, so.
I'm listening.
Yeah, so we would need to know at this point, I guess, what we want to move forward for the public hearing.
Y'all know where I stand.
I still think the one, the full position, like.
I just think it's a no-brainer, if it's something, especially if the position itself is required, let's get the best person in here, and I think you have to go out with a full-time position.
Especially because if kids are struggling with reading, it's great to have somebody who's actually, that's their full-time position is.
Y'all know, I like it.
And that they're incorporated into the culture and climate of the whole building every day, on a day-to-day basis.
And we used to have somebody, so it's not something, it's not something foreign to.
Or brand new.
Or brand new, it's not.
So the next step would be for you all to make a motion, right, or no?
I don't even know if motions are required, I mean, I would make one just to be safe.
No, because I think honestly, at this meeting, it's usually that the, they usually vote.
The budget committee?
The budget committee usually votes to approve or not.
I mean, I know after the public hearing, you have to make a motion on what you want to take to deliberative.
Okay, I see.
I just don't know.
But for the purposes of this meeting, okay.
I mean, you could make a motion to say that you want to take the budget as presented to the public hearing.
But if we're, but we have that open question about the default, does that matter?
The default is not presented in the public.
Okay, so we can just vote to go with this proposed?
I mean, you, you're not going with it, that.
I mean, that we're presenting it at the.
You just make a, yeah, I would just say that.
I mean, it can't hurt to make a motion.
I would just make a motion.
I mean, I don't know, I just.
To show that we are, we're in improvement, we're in agreement on it, yeah, go for it, Bobby.
I'll make a motion that we use this current proposed budget for presentation at the public hearing in January.
I will second that.
Thank you for your help.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there's a great question about the budget committee, so are they going to meet?
I was going to say, I can message Rachel.
Does it have to be at a board meeting? No, right, or does it?
It has always been, that's why I'm shocked that none of them are here.
I don't think it has to be at a board meeting.
We did invite them, right? Like, were they invited to this meeting to know who to take on?
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know.
I do not know. And may have, who usually invites them?
Who invited you last year, Bobby?
I was here.
He was always coming.
I was here, but.
So nobody.
I was always here.
We can look into it.
So they can meet whenever they want, and then I think they just have to give you their recommendation, if they agree or not, which could happen in the January.
Because that does go on to the ballot that is approved or not approved by the budget committee.
If they review it, now if the budget committee chooses not to review, then it wouldn't go on the ballot. But if they do choose to review in the next month and come to you in January, I, we can't draft the ballot until after January.
Right.
Because you have to make the motion on what you want to take to the deliberative. I will draft it before, so I can get your signatures that night, but I'll bring two copies. That way, if they do approve or don't choose to weigh in, we'll have the copy.
Okay, I think that's fine.
Jenny, would, does it make sense for one of us to reach out?
No, because we're not supposed to. I've never been, as, as, at least in my previous position as being on, I've never actually. I think it may be it's you, you, because I feel like maybe Chris.
We're going to find, I'm going to find out.
Find out.
I'm going to find out, and then.
I mean, if you need us to reach out, let me know.
Okay, yes, I will find out, and I will let you know, and we will go from there.
Okay, cool.
Great. I think we're all set.
I mean, it's definitely less formal at our level than it is like joint board and stuff, so yes, yes. Thank you so much, Molly, this was great, I appreciate you staying through all things. Okay.
This is where we can hash some things out before it goes public. Do you want to do that?
Do we need to go in and on?
No, I'm, all I'm.
You have questions that you wanted to address?
I do have questions that I just wonder if.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want me to say?
No.
She's like, wait, do you need my numbers?
You know, definitely on this grid, there are things that are outside of my control, probably about half of them. The other ones, I wonder if I'll get questioned about. And if so, I would like, everything, I'll repeat the same thing that I said when I presented the budget. I feel like in my years here, I've always been fiscally responsible and taken the taxpayers, taken that responsibility very seriously. That being said, there are a few items that I am wondering if I'll get asked about, that I would like to put on your radar, that would be decisions that you would make. For instance, food service, there will be an increase in that. And I know one of the questions will be, are we going to up our, are we going to increase our, our lunch prices, you know, from three twenty-five to either three fifty or three seventy-five? That would be one way to immediately bring in a revenue, having snacks for a dollar. That can even be something that's implemented immediately. But to me, that's, that's an easy change-up. But I would never want to assume a decision that the board has the right to, it's your responsibility to make, not mine.
I, yeah, okay, sorry, keep going.
No, not at all. I just, and then I guess, I would like the opportunity to sit with Ellen again, not that these numbers that I presented again are what I believe to be in the best interest of running the school. And just like with any budget, there are times where you have to make hard decisions. I'm just, I, I guess I would just like you guys to know what I would say if I were specifically asked about a specific line, so that you're not surprised.
No.
I mean, the lunch one was the one that I made a quick note to.
I mean, to be clear, we're standing by the budget that's proposed.
Yeah, right, of course.
I just want, because I think I have a moment of confusion.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, I'm a big fan of transparency.
I know where you're coming from, because you've been to a deliberative, you know what, they go line by line, and the, the public does. There are certain people in the public who do ask the hard questions, so you want to make sure that, tell me if I'm wrong, that we understand what your logic is behind these numbers.
You want to take some additional time now.
And that there's no surprises from us, okay.
You think it'd be beneficial to take additional time now to do that?
Usually, not necessarily, but usually they ask me those questions now as a.
Well, it's usually me, so it's all good, I did that last, last time.
Right, I did feel that, right.
Yeah, I think, and I feel comfortable, because you answered all those questions for us last, last meeting. I mean, I have a ton of notes on why, and I think that one of the things that we did last year going into the deliberative session that was very helpful, at least from my perspective, is we each took a, and had talking points to each one in case there were questions.
Yeah, I have talking points to all of them.
So I think as long as we're prepared at the deliberative session with those talking points, I think it's fine. We, I personally stand by this budget a hundred percent, so.
I agree, the only thing, based on what, I almost said Lucy, what Suzie just said about the food services, I think it's reasonable to at least discuss now even, did we want to survey the parents or the community again, like we did last year, for something, for a potential increase? Because that's something that we can say, if we felt that it was appropriate, at the deliberative session that we are actively doing. I don't think we need to make the decision right now that we're going to be increasing the price, but, not to speak out of.
I personally would love snack again.
I'm not going to lie, actually, we brought up the snack thing.
I was like, please, God, yes.
And I remember at the very beginning of the year, like, that was a thing. And at least my son was very excited about that, and then we found out, no, that's not happening.
That could be implemented this year.
Right.
And that's an optional thing to offer, so we could.
It would be an optional thing, and it would bring in some, some revenue. Sorry, I didn't mean to like throw that out there, but I do think it would be maybe a potential good thing to do, that we've had in the past, that is completely optional.
Into consideration, I don't think we've come to a final conclusion, have we? I think we, we're going to continue to discuss it.
Yeah.
But it would be a source of revenue.
Right, it's certainly a possibility.
Just for clarification, was it done away with just because of the decision? Or, meaning, it's not like we can say, we want to have a snack, we as a board want to have a snack program tomorrow, that's not.
You tell me when you want me to answer.
I think you can answer that, yeah.
I just want the background.
I like it when you guys direct it.
I don't know what's in the background.
Specifically to me, because I don't want to ever speak out of turn.
No, you're good.
Part of the decision in taking it out of the mix is that it, monies don't exchange hands, it's on a debit. And so when parents aren't keeping track of how much their child is going for snack, they could be, they truly could be surprised at the end of the month, or every three months or six months, and some people don't look at it for the year, that their child has had snack all year. Now, I do totally and completely understand the parents, there are several parents and families who, when they choose to have hot lunch, they're hoping that they don't have to deal with any food at all. They just want the school to provide, and I get that.
That's me.
And so that snack would allow that to be like, get your food at school, I'm willing to pay a dollar, a dollar fifty-two dollars. And again, that's helping bring in revenue for that, so that, that actually is within the school versus asking taxpayers outside of the school to hold that burden. And I, and we have been talking about bringing snack back, because that specific thing got brought up of, I don't want to deal with any food, I just want to send my child in, and I'm willing to, you know, at any price, pay for that, there are people who say that. I just want to make very clear protocols and have notes going home, that there be very clean communication between our food services and our families, what the bill is. That's, that's been my concern from the get-go.
Is there a way with the new system to like, say a family says, I'm sending my child with food, snack, like, I don't want them to buy snack, like, is there a way to turn off that capability, like, that they can't charge?
I will say, only because I just did it with Aurora at C M S, the app suggests that you can put limits on additional spending. But I wasn't able to do it, for whatever reason, I thought I was, but I wasn't, so I just emailed our person at C M S, the food person, and she implemented it. So in theory, Aurora now has a limit for how much snacks you can pay per day. And I think you could put zero as the, as the limit. So I would suggest if we do opt to do this, to just put out a communication to the parents, that that's an option if they so choose. I don't know who that person would be.
Because some people would, some people would want snack, or bring their own snack, and allow the child to have snack on top of that.
Correct.
Some people are okay with that. And then there are families that, the snack that I have provided is what I'm expecting my child to get. So there's just communication that needs to be really tight, because it has to do with finances.
Yeah, I think, I do think it's a great alternative to make some revenue there. I just would throw that out there, for sure. So if it's something you, you feel that we could do again, I think it's a great option to bring that line item down. But I also understand the logistics of it is a little hairy as well. So I would definitely leave that in, in your court.
Thank you. All the other numbers, I, it was really that one item that I, that we could play with.
No, I think that's good, okay. Anything else in the budget? Are we good?
I love it, I love it.
All right, nice, that's what it is. I don't love my personal budget either, but whatever. Those kids are expensive. Okay, policy, we don't have any policy, well, we have, we're going to revisit the ones that we, we tabled in January, just because we knew this meeting was going to be longer, so.
Um, I did, George, the policy meeting, I, I just, the only thing I wanted to update was that we, at the policy committee, we are discussing and are planning to propose to the joint board in January, a joint board, you know, for lack of a better term, manual of policies, because we don't currently have as a joint board, a, we haven't been operating under a formal set of policies as a joint board. The intention is that it's going to be pretty consistent with the policies of most of our other boards, but it's a little unclear. And so that's going to be proposed in January, but it was, we had a good discussion mostly about that this past month.
And then we'll bring back the November policies during the January policy update.
I had them, I did connect with Heather about those questions that were brought up. I had some mild updates, we're waiting to hear a firm update from.
See, so we couldn't have gone over them anyway, so look at that.
Yeah, I'm happy to share. Yeah, I'm happy to share, but I also, I think it's appropriate to.
Let's do, let's do that next meeting. Let's do that next one, okay. Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
We're meeting this month with Esther.
Okay. When are you guys meeting?
I think it's next week.
Okay. Communications Community Engagement Committee, I was unable to attend last night, last minute. I had a, I had to be at all the things. But I do know that the survey is ready to go, and we will start sending some communications home, just letting people that it, know it's coming. And it will be launched in January. Safety and Security, we haven't had a meeting. We met and I updated last time. Vision Statement.
That's related to the Curriculum and Philosophy Committee. The update there is that Esther is working on planning for, to have a vision summit in March. And that will be a time when all stakeholders can come together to revise the vision statement to include some DEI language. And the goal will be to review the vision statement and the SAU sixteen DEIJ mission statement, and then work to create a statement that includes both.
Ellen, you said in March, is it going to be after the town meeting day? Just, we don't know.
That's a good question.
Not that it really matters, but certain of those peoples.
I bet it will be after, because we'll be just coming back from break. I doubt, I highly doubt it's going to be that first week.
I agree.
Based on, like, we'll just be back to school from vacation week, I don't.
That's good input. All board members will be invited to attend the March Vision Summit.
Oh, so, yeah.
Can we request?
Can we request it be after elections? Because that would be a little odd to have it outgoing.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
But if it's one of those stakeholders, any board.
Yeah, any board, yeah, of course, but also, I'm more concerned about the, we just got back from break. Can we settle for a second and then, then dive in? That's more of my worry.
You can also have a representative from the board if someone would like to attend the planning meetings for the summit. So as we go, as from now up until the summit, if you want to have someone attend those planning meetings, that's up to you.
When do they happen? Do you know?
Let's see here.
Are they, are they like a, a regular, I'm sorry, I'm just making sure my kid got home.
That's okay.
He did.
I don't see any regular dates here, but it does say, they do, it is noted that it would be ideal to have a representative for the planning.
Okay.
And that it's an invitation. So I, why don't I get back to you with the specific dates for those planning meetings?
Does anybody specifically want to be involved in that?
The visioning, is that what you're saying?
The vision and planning, yeah.
For planning the Vision Summit.
I think it depends on the day of the week.
Okay, right.
Because I wouldn't mind doing it, but it depends on the day.
I wouldn't mind doing it either, but I just, is it during the day or is it in the evening?
Great questions. Let me get you, I'll get you more information.
If you can, if you can follow up with us about that, because, yeah. That's why I do safety and security, because it's during the day and nobody else can go. Sometimes it's schedule-based. Okay, Principals Report?
Sure. I know this is in our, on meetings, so.
It's okay, kids are home safe, I'm good now.
I'm sure you've read through it. If I can just draw your attention to walking you through the SAS course. Just on that second page. What I want to do is just show you how we are faring when you take a graduating class. You look at it on the diagonal, because one year they'll be in third grade, the following year they'll be in fourth, following year they'll be in fifth. Does that make sense? So if you look at English Language Arts, and if we really look at, we'll start with 2021, because that's when her dad came in from my tenure. If you look at grade three, I just want to show you the increase of scores and the consistency of those increase of scores goes to forty-two, fifty-five, and sixty. Now, I also want to highlight that we have been higher than that, sixty-nine in previous years. However, we're also dealing with students coming out of COVID, and all schools across are seeing much, much lower numbers. So though there is a higher score prior COVID, we're still climbing back to that.
Suzie, I did, the, numbers-wise, is that percentiles, or is it just numbers relative to whatever?
That is a, um.
I think between that and the shading, I was just a little confused. I was able, definitely to follow the diagonal.
It's percent, Bobby. Yeah.
Percent proficient, is that, okay.
Proficient or above. Great question. So then on twenty-two, if you look at our third grade class and then go moving our fifth graders from last year, that would be sixty to eighty-one. So, you know, definitely the trajectory that we want to go towards. I will tell you that we, one of our professional developments that occur on a bi-weekly basis is been on our writing specifically. Because we noticed that our scores on our SAS, we're doing really great with our reading, our actual reading, our, our writing and our expression of that reading. That has been low, and so we should see a, a nice bump in our numbers because reading and writing are combined scored in SAS. So we're excited about that. Okay, math. If we look on our twenty-one year and we take our third graders from year twenty-one, they were at thirty-three percent. We bumped up to thirty-six, and now we're at sixty. I would say that's a pretty good bump. And then our, from twenty-twenty-two, our third graders from forty-seven up to fifty-three. Science, clearly, we are in a state of seeing a little bit of an up and down. I will tell you, and you can probably tell from what your children report and from this room, Selma Walsh has come in and done, she was doing experiments on day one, and the students' understanding of science has increased dramatically. And the collaboration between the classroom teachers and this department has been incredible. And I'm, I'm excited about how much students are understanding about science. Because of those scores, we are in good standing. And then the other thing I just want to highlight is that right-hand graph where it compares us to the state, or the state to, to us. And we are, in compared to the state, we're blowing it out of the water. For, not blowing it out of the water, but we're significantly better than the state. Of course, science being the thing that we still need to come up on.
Do we know what the target is for science?
Yeah, the target is the state. The state, oh.
I know for science, because there's no target listed. That's why.
I don't know that off the top of my head, Jackie, I pause right. Now, I just want to let you know that in my mind, we can and will do better. I'm still not satisfied with these scores, and that is why it's really important and why I so appreciate y'all's support behind the building out of the three tiers. Because I do believe that as we get a really strong handle on our three-tiered system, our tier one instruction is incredibly strong. We wouldn't be able to see these scores had they not been, and that's, that's twofold. That's because of the strong professional development that has been in the school for the last three years, three and a half years. And because the teachers implement it immediately. So it's that marriage between the two of them. And when we, the, one of the big pieces of work that Ellen and I and the SPED team are doing this year, is really doing an incredible scrub of all of our services, how we're providing services, what we're providing services for, how we're using our resources. And that, again, will also play a role in making sure that we're using all of our staff efficiently and effectively to the highest level possible. So this is really our work here to, to really pull full implementation into that next year. And having a full-time reading specialist and Jody as our math kind of specialist, I, I think we'll be running on, on a lot of.
How, I have a question that relates to like the transition to CMS, because having just gone through it. When we're talking about this, I don't want to say revamping, it's not revamping, but just making everything better. Have, have you worked too with CMS to see kind of what, okay, I kind of know the answer, but I wanted to ask it anyway.
It, it's really quite.
To see what, what they're seeing and, and how that relates to like going backwards to see.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
So two parts to, to my answer to you. One is, it is so beneficial that Drew Bearstow is an elementary principal, and we all have relationships with Drew, the current CMS principal. He comes to a lot of our elementary meetings and talks with us about his concerns or how we can make that transition easier, not only for our students, but our families. There's really quite beautiful collaboration between all of us with that. Some of the reports that we've heard back from CMS, one main one is that it is clear who comes from Newfields because of how they stand and deliver material. He said, the teachers know who's, and yes, and I, that's a direct correlation to the celebrations of learning. So that was, they're the ones that are asking to be student, student leaders, they're the ones getting up and doing programming. That's impressive. And that's a small number compared to huge numbers coming out of Lincoln Street and Stradivarius. So, and can you imagine when our kindergartners who have done this twelve times, who are not, not afraid at all of speaking of like, how they're going to knock it out of the park?
Heck, those third graders aren't either.
Third graders. Third graders eating away the social security.
Drop.
I mean, my child almost did drop the mic.
Okay, no, that's, that's great, because I, I mean, transitioning now twice there. I, I've definitely seen that it's getting better, so I wanted to just see how that communication is, is going.
It's definitely been a priority across all of SAU sixteen around the transitions from elementary to middle, middle to high, and then also just general vertical and horizontal alignment, for sure.
And I, I would like to have an open dialogue with former parents of the last two or three years who have experienced a transition, just to get feedback for our delivery and how we can make it. I would just like to do that after budget season and then ask. And start having that as an exit ticket, almost like at the end of sixth grade, please report back to us and somehow getting information back so that we, we know what we're doing well and how we can improve to make sure that our kiddos who are, some flourish. Some like find their wings and they do great, and some, it's overwhelming. And so, again, how can we best support our students to put them in the best possible way to succeed when, once they get up to CMS?
I think too, even not just the transition of, of going to CMS, but also transitioning just to, into school in general.
Absolutely.
I feel like that, that was one of the biggest, it's something I've heard in the community, it's something I've heard, I, I felt as a new kindergarten mom as well. Not knowing like what to ask for or what, you know, especially if, if you're not receiving any services prior to coming here. If you're, when to ask for services or, or what the process is, I think that that is kind of a big thing.
I mean, Laura and I are already having conversations about what that will look like in that March time or April time when we do receive the kindergartners in for screening. How can, how can Laura and I give as much information as possible to parents? So that they feel like they have a smooth transition into the space. I think, and, and to piggyback on that, I think even our new families, we just need to make sure that all our receiving families have, feel supported and connected to our community when they come in.
I think that's great. Awesome.
That's it. Tomorrow's fifth grade celebration of learning, it's going to be amazing. It's one of my favorite ones, because they actually do all the research on what raptors are, and then they create their own. Due to their environment.
It's very cool.
And food source and predators.
Jenny, did you pick up last year when, that they were not real raptors?
I did.
I, I did not.
Oh, you didn't?
Oh, I never heard of that.
Several parents around.
They name them, they look like you think you're, that they're real, and you're like, oh.
I'm like, I never knew that, I was Googling, I'm like, what coming up? And the whole parents circle around and did the same thing.
That's hysterical. Awesome, okay, um, is that, oh, did you, okay, that was great.
Unless y'all have any questions.
Great work, thank you.
School calendar update.
Right, that is that we've had some discussion around the SAU, and folks are in agreement that, given the fact that voting day is on January twenty-third, to use January twenty-third as a professional development day instead of the March twenty-ninth professional development day, that, that is currently on the NES school calendar. In order to make that change, the board would need to vote on that. As a point of clarification, there would still be the professional development day on March twelfth.
So what was the change, the, the second?
So we'd be, we'd be having school on March twenty-ninth instead of having a professional, a professional development day then, and moving the professional development day to January twenty-third.
Okay.
As a result of, as a result of voting day, and the board would need to vote on that.
January twenty-third.
Yeah, that's the primary.
Right.
And is that what most of the school districts were doing?
Yes. That's the recommendation for all of the schools to.
Is Newfields, well, we made that change this past year of having Fridays, that wasn't just in Newfields, that was all.
That was all.
It's glorious.
It is very nice.
We're trying to do it, yeah, we, it's for that reason, right?
Glorious.
But, except when you forget, which we do. But the effort is to try to, with this change, for example, consistently move.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Yes.
Because even though we don't vote here.
Yeah, no, I.
Other schools.
Right, others do, so for families that have schools, students in multiple schools.
My only ask, if we do vote on that and approve, can we just make it like, I don't know who can highlight it, maybe, maybe the SAU can.
It will be highlighted in every place possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to change, okay, I will make a motion to make January twenty-third a PD day instead of the March twenty-ninth day, which will be a regular day of school for the children.
Well said.
Is that right?
Yes.
Good. Seconded by Jackie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Done.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next meeting is the fourth of January, and that, just for clarification, that is, is that just a regular meeting? And then we have another?
That's the public hearing and the board meeting. The public hearing can occur before the board meeting. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, it happens before.
And, but it, it still starts at six, right?
Yeah.
It was, and we're, I think we're here to clarify all of that for everybody tonight.
Public hearing is at five, right?
At six. No, it all stays the same, and then we just go into our regular meeting after.
Okay.
Once again, that's January fourth.
Correct.
Six P M.
Public hearing is followed by the board meeting.
Yes.
I think is the best way to word it, so that a big sense for everybody.
And the public hearing is, this is where I get confused between deliberative and the public hearing, sorry. The public hearing is where we.
Where they can ask.
They can ask questions about the budget and.
It'll be in the gym.
And it'll be in the, in the multipurpose room and, okay.
But there's no changing of things on the public's behalf, that's at the deliberative.
That's at the deliberative, isn't it?
Yeah, y'all were looking at me like.
I feel like, I don't feel, so, our meetings never used to be this early in January, that's why I think it's throwing me off.
Is that why it's throwing us off?
I think that's why it's throwing me off, because we normally aren't like, because the deadlines to get things is, is later than that. That's what's messing me up. So the public hearing is where, is that where like Sue and everybody comes?
No, that's.
Or is that the deliberative?
That's the deliberative.
Okay.
The public hearing is sort of, in my memory, like, sort of like not as exciting as it sounds like it is.
Right.
Because it's.
I feel like there wasn't very many people, I think everyone.
It's deliberate, they come to the deliberative.
Here, that's right. That one wasn't here because.
Right.
It was just them.
For some reason, I did.
That's when I got voted in.
Right. That's why, that's why I was like, that was the night that.
That was the night that everybody was asking me questions. And when you came back out, everyone was like, we don't have any questions to ask, just answered everything.
Right. Right, because that's when we voted.
So that would have been when the budget committee was here.
At the public hearing.
At the public hearing.
In January, so we're not that.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
So then, then what do we have?
Then. Then we have to clarify the fact that the board meeting for February, as it stands right now, is scheduled for February 8th. At the last meeting, we did discuss the dates for the deliberative of February, uh, February 5th, with the snow date being the 7th. So we just need to clarify that you want the board meeting to follow the deliberative on the 5th instead of having the, another meeting on the 8th.
Yes, please God, I don't wanna have another meeting.
Yeah, that's in my calendar, I have NES deliberative.
That's what I have too.
Okay.
So the, the 5th, or, the 5th or the 7th, depending on if there's snow, is deliberative with a regular meeting after.
Yes.
So Monday, the 5th.
I mean deliberative, deliberative would be before.
Correct.
Sorry.
So also 6:00 PM start on February 5th.
Okay. I need to make that longer in my calendar. Like an hour, nope.
So we'll make sure that that's clear with regards to the postings and whatnot.
Okay. Uh, when we post it, are we posting the snow date too?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think that we've done that before. Of course, it's so weird. Okay. All right. Anything else?
I just wanted to confirm that it is still okay that we can use the multipurpose room for Monday MLK Day in January, um, which I, and if we wanted to have it be an opportunity to have the board members who can make it present. I know that's on a board.
Did Tracy mention to you about?
Yes. Yeah, so I, um, and she did, we talked about it, uh, and I'm excited about some of the ideas that, that she had. But from that conversation, I still understood that we were able to u- use this space, I just wanted to confirm it.
Yes.
Thank you. And then is anybody from the board able to make, I will be there.
I don't know what time I'll get back from me.
Okay.
I should be there.
But there will be at least one board member present and it's available and open to, to the public. We will not be going out, uh, beyond.
What time?
Yeah, what time do, are, are things?
I'm sorry?
What time did we do it last year?
Nine, between nine and 12.
Nine and 12.
And what is this?
We, I'm sorry, go, I'm not stealing your thunder, go for it. No, it's awesome.
This is the sixth year we've done it in town. When, when we, um, moved to New Hampshire from Philadelphia, Martin Luther King Day of Service was a very big, um, event there. And thankfully, over the last couple of years, it's become more and more, I've seen different events in New Hampshire to celebrate sort of a day on, as been said of a day off. And so this is now the sixth year that we've done some sort of event on MLK Day, uh, in town. And this will be the third year, I think, involving in the school. And it, and it's been a great opportunity to bring folks from the community, um, as, to NES, now as a central hub to sort of, um, A, have, um, boxed food or any sort of donations delivered here. And I, I and the team can help deliver it to different local food pantries. We've partnered with other folks in town to do different volunteering opportunities. One year we worked, uh, did, we painted the stage at the town hall. We, we cleaned out the basement, I think, in here one year. There's been a lot of sort of fun. Of course, it's always freezing and very snowy.
It is always like the worst day of the year. It never fails.
Last year, my windshield cracked, so I got stuck in Maine.
In Maine. And we were being really lofty last year and trying to do like an evening event as well and tours. But I think just, we were, my thought was that, um, rather, cause you, Suzie, you were so generous with your time and I don't, I recognize it as a day, it truly is a day off from work. And I don't, I wanna minimize having to do much, uh, in terms of, um, chaperoning or opening or unlocking things. So as long as we can have access, I think, to the multipurpose room.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
That's true, yeah, but, um, if that's okay. I, I, I love the idea of having tours and stuff, but last, and last year when finally had two people uh, from the community come to ask for a tour. But what are your thoughts?
So to add on to that.
Yeah.
Just like, our Veterans Day is so important to teach the students why we have Veterans Day off and to honor our Newfields veterans. And it, it really is, I think, one of our most beautiful ceremonies that we have during the school year. As a school community, staff and faculty, we also feel like we need to do that for MLK and boost that up a little bit more and really make that a moment where we come together and, um, uh, honor what that day is for. And so on that Tuesday, we're coming back and we'll have a, uh, an assembly. That assembly will be an open assembly to the public so that, um, an open school, i- at least open school, when I mean open school, they'll be able to see the students here, get the flavor of what we do. Cause when you're in an assembly, as you all know, you get a rich experience of how wonderful the kids are.
Yeah.
So basically, we're augmenting the, um, events for MLK Day to Monday and Tuesday.
Fabulous, I love it.
That sounds like a fabulous, I think morning assembly.
Nine fifteen.
Yeah. But so thank you, I think that's a great idea.
So.
And you just need to tell me if you want me to do tours?
I don't, I, I don't think so. I think it was better, our time was better spent just answering questions in the multipurpose room, honestly. I think that, um, at least from my experience.
Like, cause there was some changes in the school.
One year we did a lot of tours, I do remember that.
So we did tours last year, um, but it, cause it was kind of the, but I think it was the first year back in the building after COVID was when it was really more. It was really more, people had more of an interest, cause they hadn't been in the school.
In a while, right.
I think that, yeah, but I think, but I also said, if, I think it would be a really good opportunity too for us to engage the community in this if we decide to move forward.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to talk to people there and we can have some stop, the map like this and have some stuff. I think it would be a really good opportunity to talk to people, cause, yeah. It is a great hub. I mean, people are coming in who are going, they, they kinda divvy out the volunteerism at that time, which is great. I made ki- kids go pick gum off the playground.
Shovel snow, we've done one year where.
We did shovel snow. Yes, there's always usually been something, so.
Although every year it's, except on me, um, Pastor Sherry had emailed just before Thanksgiving. She's like, I know it seems like it's far away, but.
But it's not.
And I'm like, you're so right, oh my goodness.
It's literally there.
Takes the community. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I motion to adjourn at 7:58. Look at that, we did pretty good.
I think so.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.